Is the video working? Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the East Haven Port of Education Special Meeting, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock. Um, I'm gonna apologize in advance that the audio um is not working. Hopefully, the, I'm sorry, the video is not working, the audio is working. Um, so with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The video is working.
And oh, the video is working?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Um, the board would like to take a moment to thank all the community members um that participated in the first public hearing. Um, I think that we're all in agreement in fixed volumes about the dedication that we share um for the well-being of students and um their success. Um, as many of, well, all of us here are aware and the public is aware, the Board of Finance recently finalized this decision to reduce the district's budget uh for the upcoming fiscal year by five hundred thousand dollars. Um, this decision is not one that we support, but it is the reality and that we have to navigate through. So, um, this evening's purpose of this meeting is to kinda look at our budget, um, our and um start really kinda talking about different line items. Um, I do have an audience of citizens on here. Um, obviously, there's nobody here for that. Um, if anyone emails in before the end of the meeting, um, and we're able to get that, then um we'll add, you know, we'll say whatever comes in. Um, and we'll go from there. Um, before we start off with the actual line adjustments, um, I've asked Dr. Tobrito to speak about the health insurance. Um, and the reason why is because this has been brought up several times at the Board of Finance and um I just think it's important for everybody to have clarity on the health insurance line item in our budget for the upcoming year. Dr. Tobrito?
Thank you. Um, so on our district um website, you'll be able to see this year's um proposed um budget that we've been working on for the twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and wanna bring your attention to line thirty-five that actually has the starting point for the health insurance, the same as the endpoint after the adjustments last year. And you can clearly see it's a fifteen percent increase. Um, I'd like to bring attention to what was passed out to you, the minutes from our um cooperative, the Eastern Connecticut Health and Medical Cooperative. That's the health insurance company, um, or I should say, health insurance group that we're a part of, um, that resulted in the decrease last year. And under item six
Yep.
on those minutes already highlighted for you says recommended starting rate for budgeting is fifteen percent for fiscal year twenty-six. And then it's repeated again um in the back for January. Uh, so wanted to just share that with you. We don't create these minutes. Um, our business manager, Mrs. Houston, attends these meetings. So that's where the fifteen percent came from. And so once I learned that there was documentation to support that, I wanted to make sure that that was available to the public. So thank you. It was just a qu- a quick um overview.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the health insurance before I move on?
I just wanna make sure that I understand it fully.
Sure.
So this meeting was in December of twenty twenty-four. And during this meeting, they clearly stated that it was recommended that for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-six to budget for a fifteen percent increase.
That is correct.
So, again, I know we've been talking about it over and over, but it's not like it's something new that popped up. This is something that has been documented and told and known since December of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay.
And it was budgeted. So when you look at our budget and that line item number thirty-four, you see that it is the starting number of three million ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-three. Um, I'm very familiar with these numbers.
I'm sorry.
Memorize them. I've been looking at them so much. Um, and then it says fifteen percent. It's calculated what that fifteen percent is all the way across.
Okay, perfect. So if I fully understand and we discussed it fully, then the community will also hear that as well. So thank you.
Correct. Awesome. Okay. All right, so I guess that was the easy part of the meeting. Um, discussion on the Board of Education budget. Because of the five hundred thousand dollar reduction, um, the board obviously needs to make some line item adjustments. Um, before we discuss any of the recommendations, I just wanna stress that when we develop the budget in which begins at the ground level in October, November, every single program and every single position is um reviewed. And everything that goes into our budget adds value to the overall success of our students. So, um, none of this is easy. None of this is things that we want to do. Um, and there's so many other districts out there that are in the same boat as us unfortunately this year. So, um, without further ado, um, I'm gonna go over um a list and some um some other items as well. Currently, our food service is over budget. Um, we're in the red at about a hundred thousand dollars this year. Um, we're down approximately um three thousand seven hundred meals from prior years. Um, during COVID. What?
Breakfast, breakfast alone is down thirty-seven thousand meals per year.
Thirty-seven hundred? Thirty-seven thousand?
When you say down, you mean we're using less than we were?
People buying breakfast.
Less kids.
Less kids. But you have to remember, last year breakfast was a hundred percent free.
Right. So that's, yeah, during COVID, the state and the federal government had funded free lunches and then um free am breakfasts. And then remember they, we had to go back to paying for lunches, but then breakfasts were free. And so people.
Repeat that number for the public. Our business manager said we're down thirty-seven thousand breakfasts. That's a good number.
Wow, that is a big number.
But that's thirty-seven thousand less breakfast being purchased.
Purchased. Right.
So the revenue isn't coming in.
Revenue isn't coming in for those because we make revenue off of those.
You do make re- some revenue.
Some does.
No, we're in the hole.
We're in the hole.
We're not able to.
Right, right.
The intent of the program, as much as possible, is to have it be as self-sustaining as it can. So being down thirty-seven thousand is a major problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when all of that changed and they changed having the um the breakfast and the lunches, obviously, number of people participating and eating other things and buying stuff has diminished. Um, and we're seeing that not only in the current year, which um Kira at Business and Planning, you guys will need to talk about, but we need to plan for next year. Um, so um when we're making all of these adjustments, we're going to have to, or my recommendation is that we put a hundred thousand dollars into that line item um to cover some, some of these costs um that are anticipated for next year. So we're not gonna wind up in another problem.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Okay, so when we are over budget by a hundred thousand dollars, can you break down what that means?
Yeah, so that all will happen on making Kira and Business and Planning. It, they're going to have to sit there, one of their subcommittee meetings, dissect that out and also determine where, what line item that is going to come from for this year. So that's not something we have to do now for this.
But basically, there are funds that come from the state and then there are the purchases that are made. Like when that bottom line doesn't cover what our expenses were, salaries, all the food that was bought, we then have to now cover that deficit. And that's where we're at right now.
So this is salaries and food cost us more. We're not making as much.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
But this would come fiscal year twenty-five.
This is so.
This is right now.
So, right, so we have the fiscal year that we're in, which Kira, you're gonna have to deal with, which is not part of this conversation. My point in bringing this up is that we have to plan for that again next year.
Can I just?
So, yep.
Just, I'll probably to Kira because it's not gonna be hashed out now, but I'm curious if the number is down so significantly from breakfast that yes, obviously, a ch- big chunk of that has to do with that breakfast is not free. I'm wondering, just as I'm listening, how much of that has to do with are, do the students have enough time to get breakfast when they arrive at school? Because if a bus is even just two or three minutes late, which I'm not, this has nothing to do with buses, I'm saying if students arrive two, three, five minutes late, they don't have time. Because I can speak for the elementary school, I'm as, I guess I'm assuming it happens all the schools. You arrive, you get your breakfast, and then you go check in at your class. If you're late and you don't have time to go get breakfast, I don't think that all of this is just not wanting to get breakfast or not being able to afford breakfast, not having access and time to get breakfast.
And it, it, it could be. So I think that those are really valid things and um definitely should be kinda looked at. Um, I think for right now.
We don't know of any changes in schedules or bus times. They're the same as they were last year or the year before.
One question though, just for, to clarify, how much of that number, and again, we're not parsing this out, but I'm just wondering how much of that hundred thousand dollars also includes the unpaid meals?
So, if that, all of that for this current year is going to be discussed at Business and Planning. Because we're here tonight, and the reason why is I wanna make sure that we have a delineated line tonight of talking about the proposed budget. If we get into the current year's budget, I think the public's gonna get very confused on where, where things are. Are you following?
It would also be a violation because this is a special meeting and the current year's budget is not the subject.
Right.
True.
So if we're talking about the future though, when it's.
The next year's budget, right?
The next year's budget, when is it that, cause I have some other thoughts which I can hold and I have no problem doing that. But when is it that we can share our thoughts so that we decide, we're deciding on the hundred thousand or we're providing our feedback on that?
So, right now, I'm gonna go through everything and then we're gonna decide what line items we're adjusting. My recommendation is based on where we are now, where our enrollment is going for next year, and where we kinda see things is that we need to make a line item adjustment of a hundred thousand dollars into that.
We already have fifty, so it's gonna be another fifty.
Oh, we have fifty. Alright, so it'll be fifty.
Okay, so if I have something to say about that, then wait until it's done, okay?
We don't have it yet. We're recommending, we're going to recommend for the current, for the upcoming budget to add fifty.
Oh, okay, then later.
Yeah, to add fifty thousand into that line item. Okay? Um, we currently have one staff opening um in um the cafeteria food service area. The um superintendent is not gonna fill that position for the remainder of the year and it's um recommended that we don't fill it for next year. Um.
Can you repeat that position, please?
It's, it's a cafeteria worker.
Worker. Got it.
Okay. Um, the next is, um, we have a science teacher at the high school that is retiring. Um, it's recommended that we do not fill this position next year due to the enrollment numbers that are coming up. Um, next year's freshman class is that bubble load count year. Um, Dr. Tobrito has met with the science teachers and the administrators. Um, and they're working on scheduling and courses to make sure that all of the standards are covered. Um, and we don't lose any um courses that are currently being offered. And um just want everyone to be careful. Um, the planning and everything does take time and the administrators and Dr. Tobrito and the science teachers are working on it. So that would be a recommendation. Um, another recommendation is um eliminating French at the middle school. Um, as you all know, we currently have a long-term sum. Are you ke- okay, keeping up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and um it's recommended that we eliminate this um offering and teaching position. I do think that it's important for the public to know that French and Spanish are still being offered at the high school levels. And in addition, they also offer um independent um classes for, for language as well. Um, so the, that's the recommendation on that. The um next one is the compliance um, um role at the central office as well as um need sack, uh, need ask. I say that wrong every time. I just can't say that word. Um, and that was requested um with the upcoming accreditation. Um, and also to comply with the new mandates of compliance. Um, so um obviously with the cuts, we need to take that out. Um, the staff at the high school has been um attending um professional development on the accreditation process. Um, and they have feel along with the superintendent that they can handle that in-house, correct?
Yes, that was gracious of the union to say, you know, it's something that the teachers um will take on.
Okay. Um, I do want um the public to understand that that's a very heavy load um on top of a full schedule for everyone as well. Um, the compliance uh portion of um that position is something that we still is in need. I am going to recommend that the board add um an additional fifty thousand into our legal line. Um, our superintendent is doing more roles than any superintendent. Um, being the curriculum director overseeing HR and compliance. And um along with all the standard duties and we need to lean on our legal counsel to help. That's what we're there for. Um, so that is a recommendation. Um, we're recommending that the world language program at the middle school be eliminate, eliminated at this time.
Elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I say?
You said middle.
Oh, my goodness. The recommending that the world language program at the elementary school be eliminated at this time. And I even have it written out. I apologize. Um, the certified teacher um can be used to fill an assisting um vacancy in a um, in a classroom. So this equates to five positions that are being cut. Um, I'm going to go around the um table with the board members and see what your thoughts are. Um, and then we can um actually jump down. I wanna kinda go over um discussing the non-tenure employees and then come back to the conversation before any votes take place. But right now, I kinda wanna, it's a lot to absorb. So I wanna go around and ask each of you questions or comments. I'm gonna start with Kira. Cause you put your pen down first.
Um, can you uh, can the school survive without that one cafeteria worker?
Yes.
What school was that? I missed that.
Middle. Um, I think your most controversial one there will be world language, the elementary school. Um, but that's just my personal opinion. Um.
That's all I got to say.
Just, I think that will be a sore subject for uh people, but we'll see what happens.
Um, yeah, I agree.
Shut this door, just listen to that noise.
I don't think we can.
Maybe don't shut it all the way. Maybe just leave it a little bit ajar.
I should go.
Economic development people next door.
They're having a party in there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I definitely agree with everything. Also agree with Kira on world language being controversial. The kids absolutely love it. You know, we have a great teacher there, but if she's able to shift, then, then be a part of the school community. Um, I, I like this plan and support this plan.
I have to echo everything that they said, world language, especially at the elementary school. Given that we understand about brain development and learning of language, that being cut at that early of a stage, it makes it a lot harder to learn a language when you get to middle school and high school. So that's a, that's a concern. Um, not gonna lie. But in terms of uh the other items here, I'm in complete agreement.
Um, I for one am happy that it sounds like for the time being at least we are going to be able to meet the budgetary requirements without actually taking people and putting them out of work. Um, I can remember going through this and I lost fifteen percent of my staff in one swoop. And um that involved a lot of people losing their jobs. Um, that was hard. Um, I'm sorry that we're gonna lose world language at the elementary level. And in terms of brain development, Terry knows what she's talking about. But it's a lot better than anything I could think of as an alternative right now in terms of the human cost. Um, I do have one question. I remember from working on the policy stuff surrounding it that um the compliance officer um by law has to be separate from the superintendent. So do you have someone that you're gonna be able to tag with that?
So that's where we're adding that legal in.
Gotcha. Okay, we gotta, you know, it, it, the whole thing stinks, but we gotta do what we gotta do. Um, I, I, the last thing I'll say is, um, this is a little bit less onerous than it was going to be. We got a hundred thousand dollars back from the Board of Finance. Um, and I'm grateful they did that much at least.
Do you want to say anything?
Um, I do wanna say that I'm very disappointed. I understand and I absolutely agree with everything that Terry, Jim, everybody has said. You know, we, of, of what we have to do and what we have to deal with, this is the least painful way to have to go. However, um, in a period of time that we've been talking about cultural development, not just language development, but in an area where we have very little alternative culture for our students to experience, losing world language at the elementary school when it is such a, a vulnerable a- age for students to really get involved and get an understanding about difference. To have that go away to me is extremely painful, especially because we fought for so many years to get it into the curriculum. So that for me is especially difficult. Um, I'm torn on the French, French piece at the middle school. You know, I understand that, you know, there's issues that surround that and the students do have it available to them at the high school. But again, we're going through a major gap in language options for the students from elementary through middle school and waiting now until high school to get into anything other than Spanish. So.
So remember, we had that job posted for now over a year.
I understand, I understand. But when it's on the curriculum, it means that it's an available opportunity for a student to develop. And so we're losing an opportunity for development. So from an educational standpoint, I am very disappointed in that. However, I understand and we're very grateful to get the hundred thousand dollars back from the Board of Finance so that we're only going from five hundred thousand dollar cut. But I will say for the record that I find it extremely disappointing that both language and culture are going to be eliminated from our most developmentally needy population.
Do you wanna add anything? Oh, Jackie, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I talk all the time. It's fine. Um, ditto to everything that everybody's been saying. Um, a quick thought about eliminating French. Um, I took French. I love French. Um, Spanish is more usable in the real world. Um, so waiting till high school to learn French, I personally feel like is not the worst outcome. Um, it's still an option and um having Spanish is a more usable, like in-person, like conversations, people, all that. Um, about the world language at the elementary school, I do just wanna say that uh Senora Hagerty's program curriculum there is phenomenal. Um, I have three kids in the elementary school. It's not just world language. It's understanding cultures around the world and having access to cultures that are other for um our everyday students in our town. Um, I understand that the position, the, the person is not being eliminated. The person is being used in a way that um is beneficial to everybody. And I'm very grateful that Ms. Hagerty is going to be.
Talked about positions that people.
Yes, sorry. Uh, that um, the person is gonna need to be able to still be within the community. Um, I would really, really like to make the point, being on the curriculum board with other members here, to take the curriculum that that teacher has created and try to find a way, make sure we find a way to incorporate that curriculum into the classrooms, grade by grade. I know that the other specials, especially uh musical arts, work with world language to incorporate the cultural stuff. But if we can find a way to help support the curriculum at the school to absorb that curriculum, I think that would be beneficial going forward.
That's a great idea. Yeah. Dr. Tobito, you want to say?
I completely agree. Uh, it's um common at the elementary level to do events like cultures around the world multiple times during the year so that all the kids get to experience it. It's not the same in a class that meets on a regular basis, maybe once every seven days or something. But there are ways and through social studies, there are ways to have experiences where they do get to learn and partake in some cultural experiences.
Yeah, the PTO.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, does the cultural arts assemblies, which I believe is once a year per grade, maybe twice. But I think that we can find a middle point between having the world language classes and not to incorporate all of that information and curriculum that has been created, so it's not just lost.
How, how does that schedule work? How many times a week are they actually getting world language?
It's a six-day special.
So it's every one of six days?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like once a week, it's once, six days, then those six days. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Quick thought, just.
Quick thought just to, can I say out loud what you said before to Laurel? Cause Laurel, you had a great point about um French at the middle school. We had a lot of trouble fill, we could not fill the French at the middle school. I think that's important for the public to know. It's not that we're just saying, hey, we have to slash this, it's that we also couldn't fill the position. And we might be having a different conversation if we had people eager to apply to it. So I think that's just important for the public.
I don't wanna take any votes on anything at this point. I kinda wanna go through um the rest of the budget, um what if scenarios and everything. But um before we can go into what if scenarios or make a vote, um I wanna bring up the discussion um of regarding non-tenure employees. Um because that this is critical.
Can you explain what tenure versus non-tenure is?
Sure.
I'm not sure that I fully understand it, so I wanna make sure everybody listens.
Sure, a non-tenure employee is somebody who's um only been here for a short amount of time, I believe it's forty months or less. Um and they and um they can receive pink slips. And I'm gonna go through this, um and they don't have as many rights, if you will, um in their employment during that quote probationary time. So um let me, I think this might help clear up some of your questions. Um as many of you have seen on the recent news, um some districts are issuing pink slips to non-tenured staff. We believe this practice has not served the best prac- um best practices of the district. Um it puts the district at risk of losing highly highly qualified in um educators, many of whom um hold specialized certifications that are essential. I don't think the public is well versed, and this is to your point Jackie, in the complexity of certifications that are needed at the various levels of teaching, um different courses and the challenges that um that we have finding educators. Pink slips um are also very dis- disruptive to the learning of the students um as people would have to receive them by May first. At East Tatum, we, meaning hopefully all of us collectively and meaning the board and the superintendent, um obviously we hold our staff in the highest regards, regardless of their longevity in our district. Um our hiring decisions are based upon um specific needs of the district and the certifications and the expertise is um to require them. That being said, I want the board to keep that in mind that we are not discussing pink slips. So we do need to kinda go to the next subject of what happens if this budget does not pass.
I can also contribute a little bit.
Please do.
So the law requires that we would have to send out notices, also known as pink slips, to anyone who is not tenured, so they don't have those guaranteed assurances of employment. Um and it's a pretty traumatizing experience because the letter actually says that as of the end of the school year, you are no longer employed. Um and so to set that in motion when we've have these other possibilities to get the budget to pass to be in adherence to what the board of finance has requested, I think the risk really is not worth it. Because we wanna keep the people who we've hired and they might think, wow, my job is not secure. I'm gonna go look elsewhere and just start to panic. So I I think that we are in a place that there is a plan that we're not going in that direction, so why put them through that? So that's why we wanted to at least acknowledge that the board of ed in situations like this, like you've heard in other districts, they actually do discuss it because they don't have any other options. And so it becomes a pretty um damaging experience that they have to go through.
And we have to be very careful even discussing that option because if you discuss it, it has to be noticed to all of those employees that you are discussing um pink slips. So we have to be careful even with this, that's why I'm I'm being more vague than than you are. Um because it's not an agenda item to discuss.
The action, right.
The action.
For our purposes right now, it's more background information.
Yeah, that's all I'm doing, just explaining, yeah.
I'll just add one other thing. Um I mentioned a few minutes ago that I went through the the sort of the difficulty of losing so many staff at one time. The other thing that changed is that after that, um I think for the rest of my time in that district, I might not be remembering correctly, but I think it was permanent. Every spring, every tenured teacher got a letter saying they were not going to be employed the following year.
Every non-tenure.
Every non-tenure teacher, thank you. And um you know, uh we would run around telling them, we don't think this is gonna happen, we're gonna hire you back if we can. But it was, it was shattering for them, um especially the younger ones who are s- often so idealistic. It it's very difficult for them.
Right, I I have heard the same story in recently from another um chair that um the superintendent and the administrator would go around, they hand them out in the middle of the day and then expect that teacher to go back into the classroom and teach. Like I just, I can't stomach it, I really can't. So really, I think that we have to look at the plan for the five hundred um thousand and we also need to talk about a contingency plan. So we don't need to go down that road. And then what I'm saying by contingency plan is um that there's a chance that this budget won't pass. There's um a lot of negativity that's going out there. Um and if the budget does not pass historically, um the board of education budget can be less. So um what I would recommend at this time, hi Sean. Um and I apologize, I forgot to tell everyone Sean is running late. Um at this time, I'm I'm going to recommend after speaking with Dr. DeBrito that we don't post any additional vacancies at this time. Um there is postings for pre-k teacher, um a agricultural teacher, agricultural science and the uh second grade teacher. Um those are the only current postings, is that correct?
Yes, as far as I know.
Okay, um and um it would probably be wise not to post anything until after it's passed because we wanna be ethical. If you're posting your position, you're looking to fill it and you're looking to hire someone. And then you say, well, he can't hire you until the budget passes, it's just not um not great. Um at the same point, I think that we need to be prepared that in the event that this budget does not pass, everything has to be back up on the table. Um we need to talk about sports, options about um paid for play or um eliminating mid- the new middle school um track um team that they wanna do, we're gonna have to look at field trips, we're gonna have to look at AP exams. We're gonna have to look at the fact that we pay for supplies. Um it will not be pretty whatsoever, so fingers crossed. Um but just be prepared that if in the event that the budget does not pass, we're gonna have to be back up at this table. And make some very hard decisions. So I wanna go around again and ask people um what you know, what their thoughts are. Um Martin, do you wanna say anything? You're our only audience for audiences citizens. Okay. Um who wants to start? I'm not gonna go roundtable to speak, let's have a conversation.
I just have a question, just to go back from video. The compliance officer and the NIASC coordinator, is that the same position?
That was the same.
Six, everybody keeps saying five, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was the combined one for central office. Because we don't have, we don't have HR and we don't have curriculum or you know, any like assistant. So that's why that was there, that was a temporary position too, I just wanna say that it was supposed to be for a two-year carryover.
I'll I'll say what I say every budget season, this is my fourth budget season. Um I really sincerely hope uh parents and staff who are employed and live here come out to vote. Every year, I walk in and you can go to town hall and look at the list of people who vote and it just always shocks me who's missing on the list. And it's, I mean, if we have nearly a thousand students, there should be almost nearly that many parents or guardians, grownups coming out to vote. And there's not, and I, and if you want to save more positions, I would recommend voting. And uh I do agree with the send not sending out the non-tenure notice. I feel like that would put anyone on edge with two months left of school. And there's a lot of non-tenured, excellent, excellent new employees. And so that would be really sad to see any of them gone, so. I'm just gonna say, I hope people vote yes and um hope we can get it done once and be done with it. Before it gets worse, it will get worse, board of finance will cut us worse. If you think five hundred thousand would took us, oh, they had worked really hard to get a hundred thousand dollars back. If the budget fails one time, they'll come back and they'll just slice and dice. And they've made that pretty clear this season.
I um as scary and frustrating it is to see laid out the line items of what is going to possibly be cut to meet the current cuts to the budget and also having conversations about the the specific items, sports, track teams, you know.
Middle school track.
Right, just in general, like in the past of my limited experience, it was just this um amount of money that needed to be cut. And it was just like, alright, we're just gonna cut it, but like for me seeing it specifically outlined. I'm, it hurts and I'm also more fired up because I have the information. And I hope that this gets heard and this gets out that these are the very specific things that are going to get changed and that could possibly.
Could get changed, could get.
Could get changed, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna be very careful, these are the what-if scenarios that what I'm saying is, we're gonna have to look at all of this.
Right, and I think having those specific what-ifs hopefully fire, cause we all have different things that get us going and fired up and want to show up and rally. And if we hear those things, then hopefully we as a community will show up for the things that we value.
Yeah, we're very fortunate in our our community. Um the AP exams, for example, we pay for them for all of our students. And same with sports, like I can't even imagine the challenges. Some districts will say pay for play, but here's the reality on that. It's such, it's very, very complex because who makes that judgment? Of who can afford to play, who cannot afford to play, and who actually does the qualifications on that. And then you have people that are not going to admit that they can't afford that. Or the same goes with these field trips, the same goes with these AP exams. There's so many and um eh we just, you have, you have to be fair to everybody. Every single student deserves all of the services of the school. That's what the taxes are for, but I stopped, I'm going on a rant, so continue on, you know, you guys.
I hope um that people understand and take seriously the idea that um we have a a legal and ethical obligation to live within the means the town provides. And that means we make whatever cuts we have to make. I I'd also, I want them to understand and it's specifically a lot of the staff. I hope they appreciate how hard we're fighting to make sure they don't actually lose their jobs. Losing positions that aren't filled or can afford not to be filled is terrible. Losing people and saying bye-bye, you're out of work is a whole lot worse. And we're trying real hard to avoid that. And I just hope that, you know, that that's a motivation for people to get out there and vote to support the budget. And and the last thing I'll say, um a lot of times when school districts talk about, oh, we may have to go to pay for play or something like that, there are people out there that assume that that's just a scare tactic. Um folks, it ain't a scare tactic, it's real life. And um take it seriously or not at your own peril, because you may not like what comes if you don't.
And I, to that point, Jim, in the past, the board has made, you know, comments, oh, you better get out there because this is gonna happen, or any, that's not the case with this board. And that's why, like we're meeting tonight and we're making these line item adjustments and then also saying, these are the pile of what-ifs if this doesn't pass.
Uh and 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 I think your point, that that's not the case with this board. We have worked very hard on policy revisions for the last year and a half. And if you look at them, all the early ones were focused on um better financial controls and and more financial transparency. We are trying to be good stewards of both the kids and families and the dollars. And be open about that. I just hope people understand that. It's not a game and it's not fun work that we do here, not like this. Um so for what that's worth.
You guys haven't spoken yet.
I I would have to echo everything that I've heard. This is again our our fourth go-around for some of us. And the level of clarity and transparency that I have witnessed in this cycle and the last cycle completely outweighs anything that I've ever seen in previous years. And the fact that we have been able to outline specifics should really help the public to not only understand the process more, but it should hopefully put some of these doubts to rest that this stuff is real. This isn't us padding the budget, this isn't us making stuff up. These are real line items and these are real people that this could affect. So take this seriously, whoever is listening tonight and understand that your voice really does matter. So please take the time and and come out and vote.
Say, don't you wanna say anything? Sean, you haven't spoken either.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um pretty much mirroring what uh Kira said. I mean, I just really hope to see people, whoever's listening, come out and vote. I mean, uh again, to what Terry said, every but every voice matters. I mean, we might not be in this position if we didn't have the people come out to the town meeting that we had only two weeks ago. We wouldn't be in this position to have, you know, be able to have these talks. And that was because we had a good amount of people come out, show their support.
And that was because we had a good amount of people come out, show their support. So I would just say that we need that to happen again and and a lot more. It was overwhelming that we had support for the budget, if not more in the budget. So I just, again, just uh need everyone to get out there and um and show their support.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna duplicate what anyone said. I think what's really nice is that we have a great, really cohesive board and we. Work really well together and I think what I wanna add to what everyone has already said is just thanking um Dr. DeBrito. Honestly, for the compassion that you have and all the work that you've done to really look. And get into the weeds at everything because we've come up with, you know, a potential plan here. That is going to save people's jobs and we know that other districts are cutting positions. And so um I appreciate and just on behalf of the board, like thank you for all the hard work you've been doing. I appreciate you.
Yeah.
Amen.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Hey, um do you wanna say anything? I'm gonna go into capital. I know this is hard on all of us, you know, if we had it our way, we wouldn't have to do this, but. Um capital, alright, um capital is not in the Board of Education. Operating budget, but we're adding it into the conversation of our budget because it affects. In front of you is a list of um. Capital that will be done and I'm just gonna read. Them over and everything that has been postponed.
Okay, if this budget passes in the first shot.
If, if this budget, right, thank you.
First, if it passes in the first referendum, this is what our priority list is.
Right, if this passes, this is the going to be the capital projects that we're doing. The um radon testing, we are looking at um upgrading. Um exterior lights at the elementary school, the sidewalk um project at the elementary school. Exterior lighting at the high school. Um the middle school, we're looking at finally completing the exterior washing and sealing. Because that's been an ongoing project. Uh replacing um some tiles at the middle school in the cafeteria. Um working on our school's security camera replacements um at the elementary school. Um and with that, there's upgrades that have to be done to the cloud. Um that is a line item, um tile replacement in the main hallways at the middle school. Uh camera upgrades at the high school, network um switches. Uh the BAS system, which is um controls the air temperature in the high school. And security upgrade um that's needed for the cameras. I'm quickly going to now go over the list of everything that has been cut. Um. We had to cut out the um the ceiling tile replacements at the high school. System-wide interior painting, the high school carpet. Um replacement, system-wide um floor replacement um. The um system-wide vent racks, which is um mower. Um the, the um playground at the elementary school, um upgrading the equipment. We have also cut the elementary school's second and third grade playground equipment replacements. Um the um improvements to the high school courtyard have been cut. System-wide modernization of learning environments, which is replacing. Tables and chairs and and equipment that had to be cut. Uh we had to cut out the system-wide maintenance um truck number two with a plow. Um and um the middle school and high school driveway crack sealing. Has been cut and I will go back to that. And the BAS system at the middle school, which is now at the end of its life. Um is being cut. Um so with these cuts, they're not going to completely disappear. They will remain on the capital list and we will revisit them um next year. We also had to take off the um the kitchen serving line. That was supposed to be replaced at the elementary school, just as an FYI, that was put in in nineteen sixty-two or sixty-three. Um the system-wide field improvements that we do each year, we take one field and we really redo it. Um will not be happening this year. The system-wide field maintenance machine that we were looking for has also been postponed. And the system-wide cafeteria equipment replacement has also been postponed. I'm going back to the um. The ceiling of the driveways and the um for both the high school and the middle school and the cracks. Um I made a very strong point to Board of Finance that if they're going out to bond. For all of their public works, that I really want this added in. Those are, that parking, our parking lots are the same as this parking lot. And same as any other town road and should be treated in the same manner. So.
I have a question to make sure that I'm, again, understanding.
Sure.
Going through these, the capital budget.
Yep.
Fifty percent of the items cut are annual maintenance. And part of long-term capital savings for future capital projects. So, and I'm, this isn't for, could we have to do what we have to do? But just for the budget in general, when we come to a point where. Something has to be paid, like for example, H, the HVAC that we've been having to do. Where it's, well, weren't we saving? Where there was a capital long-term plan to save money over five, six years to do it? That's what has to get cut to get the budget down when when it's not approved. So I just want the community to know that. The cuts that have to be made, some of them are going to cost us a lot more money. In in upcoming years. And that's not because we're hiding things, it's because we have, we're we're bare bones. So if we have to cut our savings to be able to fund our students going to school. Then that's what we have to do, but it's not gonna go away. Not funding these things this year. Is, should not be a surprise that it's on next year's budget the year after that. I heard comments about. Well, I thought we fixed the insurance problem, why is that on here? Well, because things change year after year and if thing. This is a bad example, I realize that now that that's totally different, but same thing with the Board of Finance, he's saying, talk. Talking about kicking things down, kicking the can down the road. If we're not saving increments of money to to cover these giant projects. Then when the giant projects need to be done. It has to be paid for either way.
I would, I would agree with you. We sit there at long range every year with this.
And and I know we do, I just, I don't understand the disconnect.
Can I, can I?
Jackie, in some ways, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say I wanna tag on to the kicking of the can. Um in specific conversation regarding field improvements. Which at Business and Planning, for my six years on the board. Has been to the point where we invested an enormous amount of money to recover our fields. Because they were ignored. So now we've got an eighteen thousand dollar annual line item that we have put our money in and each year we take on a field. We're, we're now going to end up with a situation where we have to recover a field, which is way more than eighteen thousand dollars. So to to your point, kicking the can down the road. The second question that I have is about losing a truck with a plow. So who's gonna plow?
So they're not putting money into that line item this year? Let me, I I wanna back up and I wanna explain something. The town allocated one point three million dollars to the town and Board of Ed. And it was decided that it was going to be a fifty-fifty split. So we got six hundred and fifty thousand, we had to go through our entire list and pick. Because the ones that we left up top are all security and mandated. Like the ra- radon testing, we have to do that. You know, there's no, and then the ceiling and stuff, that's why we chose them. Because they were scored the highest for security or for need. It's not to say, I just wanna make sure everybody's understanding.
Yeah, totally, and if I came across that way, I don't mean it at all. I know we're doing the best that we can with what we have.
And I'm not happy about the playgrounds not getting redone. I mean, I remember seeing up until about, what, about five years ago. Some of the things that I wrote on when I was a kid in elementary school. And I'm getting a little old.
That was only ten years ago, right?
So um eh I understand, yeah, I get it.
You know, Jackie.
I just wanna say one last thing and then I'll be done. So something that had, was originally high needs that got moved out was annual. Field, high school fields and track. Does that include, that's the high school track?
Which one are you saying?
The system-wide field maintenance machine for the high school fields and track. That's the track that the community like had done, that the community gets to use when the school's not going, right?
I'm not sure which one you're.
Second, the second, the second of.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm gonna have to ask Don what that is. I think that was a replacement.
Okay.
Thirty-one thousand for.
The reason why I ask is because I feel.
The fields and track, so I think that was a replacement mower, is replacement mower.
Cause he, he did agree to that.
Well, if we can't mow the the tracks, then the community can't use it, so we need the community to show up. For the budget because. Somebody may, may not have a kid in the high school, but wants to use the track. I'm one of the elder millennials that still occasionally uses Facebook and I'm on the town and it's, it's a very. Heated, very passionate discussion about being able to use this track that everybody in town is so proud of. So that may be on the education capital budget, but it is a, it's a community space for everybody in the community. And that's something that needs to be remembered.
You know, what I was gonna add too, no, that's fine, Jackie. Um you talk about kicking the can down the road and having problems. Well, think about what we just heard, they're not going to work on a si- uh heating and ventilation system, control system. Which we're told is at the end of its life. If that fails mid-winter, we're gonna spend the money. We don't know where we're gonna get it, but we're gonna spend the money. Um none of this is a really good idea. The, maintenance is the first thing to get delayed.
I'm well aware.
When, I'm not faulting you, don't misunderstand me. Uh it it's the first thing to get delayed when people wanna try and lower taxes. And it's the most short-sighted thing you can do. But you gotta do what you gotta do. It's, but it's a loser. It is absolutely a loser.
We don't raise taxes this year, we're gonna have to come up with money in years anyway.
I work in preventive and protective maintenance. I've been working, trying to work with the town on, you know, and saying, okay. We have to do preventive maintenance, cause it costs you ten times more, here we go. Um I'm not happy about it, we can't bond our projects, you know, and our capital stuff. And you know, if anybody has any suggestions on. Right, if um anyone has any suggestions in regard to any of the capital up top. That's fine, I think we, Kira and I went over this with. Dr. DeBrito and um.
Ten years old.
And and Don was there. Yeah, the meeting to kind of figure out where our six fifty is. I tried to keep the field improvements, if you listened to the Board of Finance meeting, you were there. I tried desperately to keep that in, I offered suggestions. There was absolutely no movement. So, you know, I'm I'm grateful that we have six fifty. I'm grateful that the Board of Finance worked with us with that, you know, reducing our. Our cut from six hundred thousand down to five hundred thousand. Um so that's where we are with that. Is anybody else wanna talk about this before we wrap up? Okay.
One comment.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Our town at every entrance from other towns has a very lovely sign that says, welcome to East Hattam, proud of our schools. It doesn't say proud of our bonds, proud of our wishes, proud of what we wish we could do, but or or what we can't fund. Proud of our roads that we, proud of our schools. So let's do that. Be proud of our schools and show up and vote for the budget.
Very well said. Well, we're firing you up tonight.
This is why I'm not like in the.
We're gonna give you more tea before these.
I will tell you to.
Just don't give her any tea, she can't deal with the caffeine.
Some of the stuff we did talk about at the Business and Planning meeting on March twenty-sixth, I didn't bring my, all my full notes. Because I know that we do need um system-wide field maintenance at the uh high school softball team, uh softball field.
Right.
And, you know, I. Food for thought, literally, like the kitchen serving line is sixty-three years old, I mean. I hope the general public understands, you would generally update your kitchen in sixty-three year, you know, you know what I mean? It's not like these are out of, you know, out of left, uh you know, out of the galaxy items. These are things that, and like, I'm so depressed about the playground and stuff, I think that's been on the capital list since I've been on the board since twenty-twenty-one. So.
These aren't things just to make things look better, these are things that are, could stop being functional.
The other, well, the other issue with the playground too, and this is the concern of why this gets always a high rating. You have to think about insurance. If a piece of playground equipment breaks and you then, you know, the insurance company comes in. Or somebody gets hurt on the playground, I should say, eh or something breaks and your insurance company can say. You need to fix this. And then we'd have to go back to the Board of Finance and ask them. Um.
Just to piggyback off of that, Don does get stuff evaluated and apparently it passes.
Right, right here.
Even though it's weathered and aged, it, I wish I could remember.
That's also an issue for the fields. If they get in rough enough condition, somebody could get hurt and we could end up in a suit.
Well, I just wish Don was here because we did have a very long conversation about the recovery of those fields. One of them was at the high school. And how, how long did it take us to get that field back up into good working condition? It was a multifaceted reason why it was in such bad state, including losing our team that was doing the work for us, but. You know, it's, it's, it's so frustrating, you know, you you get ahead and now we're gonna be behind again.
Right, and unfortunately, then you're weighing those against new security cameras and exterior lighting.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not challenging the decisions of what's here on the top and what's below. I'm just screaming to the void about like why we have to pick and choose, because all of this is necessary.
Right.
Not just a wish or a hope, like me, all of this is needed and we shouldn't have to choose between. Taking out needs for other needs, because all needs need, they need to be met.
Do you wanna add anything about capital?
I'm hiring you for my PR, seriously.
Okay, um Dr. DeBrito, take over um the health insurance and the fifteen percent. The only little glimmer, and I'm just having little glimmer of um of hope here. Is that that might come down instead of fifteen percent. We don't know the number yet and they're telling us not to make changes yet, but we're anticipating. That that could go down to, is it ten percent? Okay, so, but with that, and I say it's only a little glimmer, cause I'm gonna now take that away. When we created the budget, um we put a zero percent increase into special education. And um we thought that we could manage that eh plus the fact that we had. A little bit of healthy reserves um in case of, you know, having to go back and um. And and get money. However, um we're re, we're tapping into our reserves for um. For the. For the additional ten thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars that we were over. Um and um. My recommendation is the savings that we could be occurring from. The health insurance to move that to special education. So, um, I am going to be looking for a motion to. Are you guys ready? Do you wanna discuss anything else before I read the motion?
Well, excuse me, um, before we go any farther on the agenda. I just wanna make sure that we aren't skipping down here when we need to actually do this.
Audience and citizens, I already said, I asked Martin if he wants to speak.
I know, but you said it out of turn, so I'm just bringing you back to the agenda.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak?
Say something.
Hey.
Can I, I just wanna, so originally for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget that we're discussing.
Yeah.
The line item for special education had a zero percent increase, so it would've been the same as previous years.
Right, it was actually a little bit less. Yeah.
And then you said some, uh, there there was an increase in costs.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, um. We need to put money into that line item, it won't say it's zero.
Correct.
So, we're recommending it is be the health insurance, which we budgeted based on what Doctor DeBrito said and everything. Back when we started it was at fifteen percent, that looks like it could come in at ten percent. So we'd have a percentage change there, but when I'm saying with that glimmer of hope is like. That money needs to go into special education.
No, absolutely, that's not what I'm questioning, I thought I missed something, where are we, like, did you say we're currently over budget for this year?
Oh, no, for we're currently over budget in food.
Food service.
Food service.
Okay, wanna make sure I wasn't mixing it up, okay.
So. Looking for a motion to adjust the following line items in the twenty five, twenty six. Board of Education proposed operating budget. Um in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to special education, fifty thousand dollars to food services. Fifty thousand to Board of Education legal and adjust the budget by the proposed changes. As discussed for staff positions.
So, again.
Any further discussion? You look like you wanna say something.
No, I that from, this was from earlier, remember when I was saying, should I wait until later? About the food service thing, is this the time when I should talk about, say that?
Is it about this proposed budget?
Yeah, we were talking about how we're a hundred thousand over for food service.
Well, that's the, that's the current year, that's not the budget we're working on.
That's the current year, maybe not the budget we're working on for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I have any.
You could bring that to Kira at Business and Planning, send it to her.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
I have no comments.
Yeah, we were not moneying the two together.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Thank you, um. Who seconded that?
Jackie.
Jackie. I'm sorry, I I'm really tired today.
There was at least three of us that said it at the same time, so.
Right, I just need two people. And Laurel.
You're doing so.
Terry and Jackie.
Oh, it was Terry, okay, I was trying to make sure I get the minutes right. Pulling all the others, I need people, okay, so um I also need a motion to request. Um. A um a leave of absence, so I am going to. Ask for a motion to go into executive session and invite the superintendent in to um. To discuss, thank you. Wearing out here, alright.
Jim and Sean.
Jim and Sean.
Can we take like three minutes?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.